Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 26, 2019 Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we have the approval of the agenda next. Anybody have any questions about the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by DeSantis and a second by Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the approval of minutes from the meeting last Monday, August 12, 2019. Have you all given a set of those minutes? Any comments on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the planning commission minutes dated August 12, 2019.
Thank you. Have a second?
I will second that.
All right. Motion by Mehdi and second by DeSantis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Okay, we have one public hearing this evening for the Paravell Apartments. This is a request for a planned unit development concept review on 4.962 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 4.962 acres, a site plan review on 4.962 acres, and a preliminary plan of an outlot into one lot on 4.962 acres. Welcome. The way we'll handle our public hearings, we'll ask you, the applicant, to come up and make a presentation to us. We may have a few questions afterwards, then we'll turn it over to staff for their staff report. We may have a few questions for staff after that, and then we'll open it up for a public comment if anybody in the audience wishes to make comment, and we'll deliberate. So, we'd like to start off, and welcome to the applicant, and would you like to make a presentation? Please state your name when you address the podium, please.
My name is Ryan Seiler, Vice President of Development with Timberland Partners, address 8500 Norman Lake Boulevard, Bloomington, Minnesota.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. With me is a few members from our project team, notably Evan Jacobson, who's a principal with Tucci Montgomery Architects, and they're the primary design architect on the project. I'll give you a little bit of background on Timberland Partners, kind of to start. Some of you may be familiar with us, but we are a local development firm. We are a private, family-owned firm. We were founded in 1992. We're still owned, 100% controlled by the original founding family. We own and manage about 70 apartment communities totaling almost 16,000 units in 16 states. One thing that's unique about us is we develop with the long term in mind, so we put a lot of thought into our developments. We do quality projects. We like to think we do quality projects. And we only, we are a property manager as well, and we only manage what we own, so we don't do any third-party management. We only manage our own units, and for us, you know, nobody cares about your business like you do, and so it's very important for us to just focus on what we own. Currently, we've got $120 million under development in 2019. That includes the Elevate Apartments at Southwest Station, which is scheduled to open on Wednesday, actually. Hopefully, everything comes together in time. And then, we've got $130 million in pre-development slated to start construction in 2020, and that includes the Paravell project, if all goes well, tonight. So, we're located in Bloomington, Minnesota, right down the road, so we're, for Elevate or Paravell, we'll be here every day onsite, watching the project, and we've got experience, obviously, working with the city of Eden Prairie. So, really enjoy working with staff and glad to be back in front of you. It's not the first time you guys have heard about the project, obviously. We've been working on this project for a little over a year, almost a year exactly from the first time we introduced it to city staff. In that time, we've worked closely with our partners, Press Homes, to come up with a plan that works for everyone. We had the community open house for the master redevelopment in September, the initial design review in March with the city, and then we were in front of you on April 22 for the concept review, followed by the review by the city council, and then we've also had a couple meetings with the Met Council as we applied for some of their livable community funds. So, there's been a lot of stakeholder engagement. We've had many meetings with staff to tweak the design, and hopefully, everyone will like what they see tonight. With that in mind, what we've ended up with is a project that contains 246 units. The unit mix is, as you can see, is listed up on the screen or on the screens in front of you, but it's a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, one-plus dens, two-bedrooms, and some two-plus dens. Unit sizes range everywhere from 520 units on the studios, all the way up to almost 1,800 square feet for the two bedrooms, so generous floor plates. Unique to this and something we've been working with staff on is the affordable, so we are requesting TIF as part of this, and as part of that, 50 units will be affordable at, 20% of the units will be affordable at 50% AMIs, and then seven units will be affordable at 80% AMIs, and six units affordable at 100% AMIs. This is something, you know, that we've been working with staff with, and we're very proud of the fact that between Elevate and Paravell, we'll be having developed over 100 affordable units within walking distance to the LRT line, so happy about that. I'll touch on it in the next slide, but one thing that you'll notice that is different from when we were here in April is we upped the parking count by over 100 parking stalls. So, this current plan is a 425 parking stalls, 358 of which are covered in structured parking. And we've also got 327 bicycle parking stalls as part of the project. Specifically, I think it's important to call out and talk a little bit about kind of what we took away as the main points as feedback from when we were here in April. So, a couple of things that were raised were height and density. What we've done as part of that is actually reduced the footprint a little bit for more green space, and then we're doing seven-story construction, which will be actually one of the first projects in the metro, built seven stories as part of the new building code. So, we've been working with the building official here on that as part of it, but we're trying to get as dense as we can, as tall as we can, without having to go to post-tension concrete, which is not economical. Parking, we had 324 stalls in the earlier version that we presented. That was 1.3 to 1 parking ratio. We've upped that now. We're at 1.7 to 1 parking. I think an important part to note about that is we're over one stall per bedroom, I think, which is quite an accomplishment for a site this size and as many units as we have. Another thing I'll note about the parking is some of the units will be geared towards who, a population, we like, may be empty nesters who might have a place up north or a place down south, and probably will, this will be their kind of landing pad. They'll probably only have one car while they're here. Proximity to transit as well, we're within a half mile of the LRT, so I think that will also help us with parking, but we've made a really concerted effort to address the parking issue. Green space sustainability, I've got another slide where we'll go through what we're doing for sustainability. We've also worked hard on the public connections, and when Evan comes up and addresses kind of the architectural layout, he'll address that. One community, if you remember when we were here in April, we kind of had a seven-story tower, and we had a five-story tower, and they were connected by kind of a two-story community space. We heard the feedback. What we've done now is we've connected those buildings. There isn't separate towers anymore. It's one integrated, connected building. It starts at seven stories, it drops down to five, but it's all connected. All the residents can go to any portion of the building they want and share all the amenities. So, we've worked on that. And then, building articulation, some of the feedback was we needed to work on the roof lines and make it appealing on all, every side, and we've worked hard to do that, and I think you'll see that as well later in the presentation. Some of the community amenities, we'll have onsite management and maintenance. I always put that at the top of the list because I think it's important. We'll also have concierge, two rooftop patios, we'll have an outdoor pool, we'll have a sports simulator. The goal is to provide people with a lot of recreation options and a lot of amenities. We really look at this as a one-of-a-kind project in Eden Prairie. Unit amenities, these are becoming standard in market rate units, but ceiling fans, dual sink vanities in the master bathrooms. I think what you're going to notice is the floor plans are pretty generous and are really trying to do good things with nice-sized patios and balconies. And then, I think the best amenity actually, the buildings actually, oversized windows. I think the windows on this project will give you great views of the lake and great views of the city, and I think that'll be a great amenity for the residents. Sustainable community characteristics, when John Fletcher with Presbyterian Homes gave his presentation back in April, there's this, you know, he stressed the sustainability and the green features they were using. We're building off of that through a lot of the same things. We'll have a district stormwater system that treats the stormwater for the entire development. We'll have a rainwater cistern that captures the gray water, and we'll try to use it for irrigation or any way possible we can. LED light fixtures, permeable pavers. Especially, we'll use permeable pavers to mark kind of crosswalk connections and as a wayfinding technique as well. Low-flow plumbing fixtures, we'll have EV charging stations, and then native plantings, green roof trays, a lot of different green characteristics. And we'll carry that through for construction too. Our contractor, Frana Companies, will use recycling of construction waste as well, so a lot of sustainable characteristics to the project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Evan Jacobson with Tucci Montgomery to kind of walk through the architectural elements of the building and specifically address how we heard your feedback in April and some of the changes we made to address your concerns. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening. Evan Jacobson, Tucci Montgomery Architects. We're at 7645 Lyndale Avenue, South. Yeah, as Ryan said, we're really excited about the project as well. Obviously, they are. We think it's a great design and going to add to the community and the character of Eden Prairie, and I'd like to just give you a high-level overview of the presentation. So, if you want to jump to the next slide, Julie. Oh, sorry. So, I think everyone's familiar with the entire PUD redevelopment. The area in red is the entire project area of the PUD. Our portion of the site is the highlighted blue portion in the upper right-hand corner of the slide. Overall, PUD master plan, obviously, you guys have already seen and reviewed Phase 1 with Presbyterian Homes on the kind of lower left. We're here talking about Phase 2, which is the 246-unit project kind of on the top of the screen. Then, Phase 3, I don't believe, has been submitted for formal approval yet, but that's the commercial piece on the bottom right of that screen. So, while we're here, just a couple of things to note on our site in particular, inside the dark dashed line, as noted, about 4.9 acres. We also do have the wetland in there, and, you know, a portion of that dark gray roadway that's serving not only our project but the entire PUD area as well. So, taking those things into consideration, the developable area that we have left to program is roughly about 3.6 acres, so. Another couple of things to note, I can kind of see is the site dips down where the saturation and the color goes further south on that page. That's a really important corner to us as we've been discussing the project and the connections of the site and the master plan. That's actually the only place that the three development parcels actually meet, so we're looking at that as a very strong connection point to both the commercial property and the Press Homes property. Kind of opposing that to the north, you can really hardly see it on the screen, but there's a dash, a light blue dashed line that represents the bike trail along Purgatory Creek and those connections to the pedestrian amenities offered by the park system there. So, you can kind of see the tree median road leading from the dark gray circle up there. There's sidewalks on both sides of that, but the south sidewalk, the one closest to the wetland, is kind of our primary connection point to basically the greater recreation opportunities within the Purgatory Creek system, so. And then, you know, I think we are doing site-wide design features in coordination with Presbyterian Homes and then the future developers of the commercial, such as Ryan noted, the, you know, consistent patio paver crosswalks to connect this entire site, consistent site furnishings such as lit pollards, trashcans, benches, so those are all really kind of, you know, lining the streets. I think last time we were here, one of the things we actually did to improve our parking count was we had kind of parallel parking to capture more site area on our site because we are pretty constrained, and that was directly across from the head-in parking that was on the Press Homes site on Phase 1, kind of between the border between Phase 1 and Phase 2 here. So, we actually, as Ryan noted, we pushed our building in, shrunk our footprint a little, rotated those parking just to, again, make a move to be more consistent as a unified development throughout the entire three-phase master plan. Zooming in a little bit just to our building-specific circulation, the two arrows, the blue arrows on the lower right of the screen, the lowest one, bottom right corner, that's our main entrance. It's our primary entrance. We have our drop-off there. That's where we imagine pickups, deliveries, Ubers, maybe a short-term mail drop, go and greet a visitor, tell them where to park. So, really, there's no permanent parking or no even 15-minute parking there. I think the last time you saw the project, we had four or five future resident stalls. We actually slid those around the bottom side of that corner where we're talking about that connection, and you can kind of see in blue, those first four or five parking stalls would be a decorative concrete treatment, and we're still working out exactly what that is. It's not blue, but it's, whether that's the exact same kind of red herringbone brick that we're thinking of over the crosswalks, or whether we do something more specific to our project individually, we're looking at those options. But the intent there is we've really kind of developed that southern corner, that connection point between the commercial property, the Press Homes property, and those parking spots as kind of an entry plaza in a sense, where our future residents would actually park there, and they'd really be kind of drawn in around that corner. So, it's heavily furnished, there's bike racks, there's benches, it's, you know, special concrete or permeable paver treatment, and heavily landscaped, so we feel really good about that kind of corner and how that, our front door is appearing kind of off of, you know, the perpendicular road to Prairie Center Drive. Moving to the left and kind of to the north, the two red arrows, those are our two main vehicular access points, the one on the bottom half of the screen that goes into the lower level garage, the one on the top of the screen goes into the upper level garage. The garages are actually disconnected, which actually helps with traffic flow a little bit because then you get two 50% garages as opposed to one big one and trying to force those 200 or 250 stalls out one garage door at one point in time. So, it also, just from a site layout perspective, worked out pretty nice with the adjacent roadways, where you could actually envision that, you know, if you lived in the upper garage, you might, you know, come down past the pharmacy and just sneak in, and if you lived in the south one, you might come from a different angle. I don't know. So, this is same view. We turned on kind of the technical portion of the landscape, kind of plantings and the amenity spaces of the courtyard. So, as Ryan noted, you know, this building is very amenity-rich, and that is both exterior landscape and interior programmed areas. So, we feel the landscape design as it is right now is a really good mix of kind of programmed active spaces and passive spaces that are more aesthetic in nature. So, you can kind of see on that, the lower point of the corner that we were talking about, that strong connection between the two. Again, there's a lot of dark there. Those are individual plants, and there's bike racks, and that blue, again, some benches, and looking at some signage and really trying to extend a building element around that corner to greet those people as they pull into those temporary, future resident parking spots. Kind of walking around a little bit, the lower left-hand corner, you kind of see some zigzag lines. Those are kind of the T-lights that would potentially be over an elevated terrace. We think it's kind of a pretty cool feature of the building. We have a bike room on that corner on the upper garage, but instead of just having a door, we programmed a patio, an elevated patio with a fire pit. So, we envisioned it as you, you know, you go grab your bike, you take a loop around the lake, and you come back, and you hose your bike off, and you have a glass of water and sit next to the fire pit or whatever you want to do there. Just north of that south wing, you can see a little bit more L-shaped furniture and some circles. It's a grill station. We kind of have three grill stations in the courtyard just to kind of be adjacent to the kind of three main portions of the building in an effort to try to create spaces that are scalable. They're small enough for groups of two, but they're big enough for groups of 15. And as you kind of migrate through the building, through the plaza, through the landscape, you can kind of find these different pockets of space, which was very intentional when we were programming the common space. So, as you move in, the kind of light green area just kind of bottom right to the circle is kind of the community garden area, and we're not sure if that's, you know, literally for the residents to have a four-by-four plot, or whether that's a community-managed element. We've done it on other projects where, you know, the building management will actually grow the herbs and tomatoes and all that stuff, and residents can just go down, pick something, and go back up and cook with it, so. And then, the blue area, the kind of geometric pool there, it's kind of up a level on that terrace landscape. It's a really nice amenity. As you can see, this, the plan is oriented north-south, and really, that western sun, especially in the summer, those short months that we will be able to use a pool, actually has really good afternoon and evening solar exposure. So, we actually, I think in the previous plan, that southern leg had a dog leg that turned 90 degrees and went up, and we pulled that back when we put the five-story over the two-story common space that used to connect the buildings. And we really just felt that that was a good move to open up that courtyard, keep the solar exposure for the residents, all the interior units, and then just anybody recreating in that courtyard. Again, this is a pretty quick rendering just of how that might look. The plant colors are probably a little off still, and, but we just kind of wanted to show, one of the unique things about this, the courtyard is, the strategy that we use is kind of a terrace separation from public to private, so the lower you are, the more public it is, and then, you know, you can kind of see on the bottom right, there's that grill station, so it's up one level, but there's a stair that goes down to the actual courtyard area, and then in that courtyard, there's the activity lawn and the gardens and all that sort of thing. So, we're kind of using a height difference to delineate the, you know, kind of the public coming into the drop-off and then going up a level into the pool, and then going up a level into the actual walkouts of the residences. Switching gears a little bit just to kind of massing programming and some design elements, obviously, these are just two kind of bird's-eye aerials of the project. The image on the right, lower right, would be Prairie Center Drive, seven-story mass along Prairie Southern Drive, and then the five-story mass kind of traveling out towards the lake. Very intentional, obviously, we wanted that density. We heard that. Another opportunity here was, you know, putting that seven-story program kind of furthest away from the lake, the lake actually, you know, elevates more of the units above the roof line of the five-story, so more of the units in the building actually get better views, those long-range views sunsetting over Purgatory Creek, so we were pretty excited about that. Ryan kind of went through the unit mix and spectrum, but I'll say from my standpoint, doing a lot of multifamily projects, we have a very large spectrum of units in terms of sizes. If you can rent an 1,800-square-foot two-bed or a, you know, 880-square-foot two-bed, we're trying to basically hit enough unit types and sizes to cover a very broad demographic, so really having something for everybody in the project. And while we're here, this is probably a good spot just to talk quickly about kind of the color scheme. I have a slide with actual materials on it later, but as you can kind of see, the building is not very geometric. There's no real good right angles. Our site's kind of wonky, and we're trying to make it work, and that presents as an architectural challenge a little bit. So, one of the things that we did to kind of create an identity as you look at this building from so many different advantages, as you walk all the way around the building and come at it from every which way, is we're kind of anchoring those, the corners, the strong corners with a high-quality white material, classic material, it's probably a natural or a cast stone product, oversized masonry unit, so really kind of something out of the ordinary. And it's just kind of a way to bookend the entire building, so as you experience this thing from so many different angles, walking around it on the creek, on Prairie Center Drive, coming up, coming over, you kind of start to understand it, and it creates an identity for the project. Interior common space, again, Ryan did a good job of kind of outlining where we're at here. The blue diagrams, if you can kind of envision seeing directly through the building, the image on the left kind of shows the extent of the common space on that first floor. It's very large, extends out into an entry terrace or an elevated terrace that kind of overlooks the pool out the backside of that common space, and that has all of our leasing centers, our fitness centers, there's some co-working space down there, mail package storage, club rooms, fireplace, fireside, all of those kind of key amenities that we're really ramping up on this project. Then, the image on the right on the top there, again, that's kind of speaks to the interior programming of these kind of nodes. You've got the rooftop terrace on the seven-story, you've got the rooftop terrace on the five-story. That four behind there is actually the dog run that's outside of the indoor dog recreation facility, which is under those grill stations that we talked about on the interior of the courtyard, so plenty of opportunity. I think just from some of my own historical research on projects we've done, we're programming about twice the amount of interior common space in this project than we are on other projects, and that was off the last, I think, 12 or 13 projects that I looked at, so. This is that slide, design and materiality. So, just to talk a little bit more about materials, the bottom two images on the left, those are, you know, some different cast stone products. We're looking at all of our options right there, and again, the kind of oversized, and we're looking at different coarse heights, so doing a, you know, a 12-inch, you know, for the majority, and switching up with some, like, some thin accent bands and working with some local suppliers to really dial that in, really make those elements special, so they do bookend that building and create, you know, an identity that is unique to this project. The middle image, the tan, that's just kind of a standard tan masonry unit. You can see that kind of trumping around the rest of the building. We do have a lot of masonry on the project, so we like that tan with the cool whites on the bookend corners to have that nice rhythm. The fourth image is just a dark metal panel that pretty much comes into play over the, both of the masonry products, the white and the tan brick, and then there's some horizontal fiber cement, some vertical fiber cement siding that would be kind of at the insetts and some pieces that are kind of way up high, typically where we use those sorts of products, so. This slide, obviously, Ryan kind of hit on the design progression and the stakeholder involvement that we went through on this process, and one of the things we heard right out of the gate was just, you know, maybe we could ramp up some of that roof articulation and be more consistent with, you know, the Eden Prairie Design Guidelines and some of the other recent projects that have been constructed here. So, the image on the left, obviously, is Elevate Southwest Station, also the Timberland project that is currently under construction and slated to open soon. And then, the project on the bottom of the screen is the Presbyterian Homes project that is our neighbor on this site. So, I think that, you know, squinting your eyes and looking at this image from afar, I think that you start to see some similarities, some consistency between the aesthetics, but also, you know, I would like to think that, you know, the white and the strong masonry accents on the Paravell project, you know, are a nice tie-in, but are also starting to create that, our own identity. And with that, this is just kind of a summary of some of the images, and I'll turn it back over to Ryan. I think he's going to review the schedule with you, and I'm happy to come back up and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
So, this is just the last slide, but, you know, our proposed schedule, you know, if all goes well, we would get our watershed approvals on September 4, be in front of the city council September 17, submit for our building permit November, and then start construction January or February of 2020. The timeline for construction is about 18 or 19 months, so that would put us somewhere probably around September of 2021 for a finish. So, that's just kind of the general, what we're thinking right now for a timeline. With that, that's the end of the presentation for tonight, and we'll take any questions you have for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Appreciate your thorough presentation, both of you. Very nice project. I just have a couple of quick questions, and then Commissioners would open it up for questions for the applicant. There was a list of staff recommendations and a staff report. Have you made yourselves familiar with the staff recommendations, and do you agree with all of them?
We have, and we do.
Great answer. Did you host a neighborhood meeting on this project, and if so, tell us about it?
So, we didn't host- Oh, so we didn't host a neighborhood-specific meeting on this project. It was part of the Press Homes Master Redevelopment Meeting back in September.
Could you refresh our memories on the results of that meeting as it pertains to this project?
Yeah, I mean, John's in the audience, he can state it, but I think the overall gist of the meeting was, is fine. I think the major comments were probably from the existing residents of Broadmoor and more the concern of, is there affordable options that are going to happen? And as part of that, you know, not only did we try to work with this project, I mean, put an affordable component in, but we also attended many meetings as part of Elevate to help house some of those people as well. But there was no negative feedback as far as this project was concerned.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Mehdi?
My question, I have, I think maybe a couple of questions. So, just a little confusion on my part because I think there's some slight discrepancy in the staff report, this report and then what you mentioned today in terms of the number of affordable units. So, I just want to clarify what the total number of, because your report here, I believe, well, it's not actually 100% clear. So, in the, let's see, the Timberland narrative, it said you'll have 50 units at 50%, but then you'll maintain in perpetuity 25 units. I don't know if that meant additional or of the 50. And you had mentioned you'll have 63, which consists of 50 at 50%.
Yep.
And then another seven and another six. So, can you help break down what the, after 25 years, is it, hopefully I'm getting that part right, after the TIF district is over, how many units will be affordable and what is the breakdown of those in perpetuity?
Sure. So, the 20% at 50%, which equals the 50 units at 50%, will run the term of the TIF period. Still working on that period, but anywhere from 18 to 26 years, whatever the final TIF period ends up being. And then the inclusionary units, which are the 13, so the six at 80 and the seven at 100, would run into perpetuity. So, forever.
And I think I have one more question on this, but I'll wait to ask Julie that. Also, I had seen, it may have been the staff report, that the affordable units are only in the five-story portion. I'm not sure if I read that right, but can you explain what the thought process is behind that? And also, I guess I'm not 100% familiar with the TIF requirement, you know, the statute TIF requirements, but I thought that they kind of had to be evenly distributed throughout in terms of the unit type and then the location.
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty evenly distributed. I mean, a lot of it has to do with unit sizes. You go into the north side of the building, the units are just much larger. So, a lot of it has to do with just pure economics. I mean, you can't, economically, with an 1,800 square foot unit two-bedroom, it would be hard to charge 50% rents and make it work. So, there's that. We did work to make the entire building integrated, so all the amenities will be open to everyone. We looked at it today too, and I think on average, 21% or 21 of the units in the north building on average fall within the 100% AMIs. So, we haven't nailed down, I mean, those units can float, is my point. They're not specific to units.
And then I guess lastly, on the seven-story portion being all wood, are there other projects in the Twin Cities that have done that, that you know of?
Seven stories all wood. I think there's a few being designed right now. I think we'll be one of the first to actually do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Villarreal?
So, I guess first I want to thank you for putting at least some preparation for electric vehicles, infrastructure charging. Do you know if it's going to be prepped for Level 2 or for fast charging?
Do I know if it's going to be prepped for what?
Level 2 charging or DC fast charging?
I, I don't know.
Don't know?
No.
Okay. And then as it applies to some of the sustainability, are you going to be allowing for composting?
We haven't talked about it, so the honest answer to that is, I'm not sure.
Okay. And then I don't know if it's possible, could you go back to slide 12? I got a couple of questions on that slide. All right, now I got to remember what my questions were. Okay, so I want to make clear on what the property line is on the southeast corner. Is that little strip of gray, sorry?
What color is this?
Tan. Is that a median that separates traffic?
Uh, yeah.
There you go. Yes. Okay. So, this property line then takes the traffic coming off of Prairie Center into the community.
Correct.
So, then the traffic going out would be on the Phase 3.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll save that next question for staff.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, no, because I, well, so the question, I guess I'll just prep staff, is when we had the first review here, there was discussion about making that a three-point turn, so that the traffic that's leaving the community can't make a left onto Prairie Center. And so, I guess the question that I'll leave hanging out there is, where does that three-point turn review come out if this property goes forward at a much faster pace than Phase And then the last question, just to confirm that, because I don't do very good at math, is could you, I guess, do your best to estimate what the setback is between the, where you're going to actually build the physical building and the street along Prairie Center?
I'll let Evan answer that question.
Yeah, it varies.
I know it varies from the corners and up there, but if you could give me a sense of how many feet that is?
It's in, it's in our narrative. I think it's 22 to 28 feet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Sure, you're welcome. Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah, I only have a couple of things that have still been on my mind since we first got into this particular discussion. Given the fact that we have the wetland that is not developable and then we have the Purgatory Creek area and that, all of that has been much the same for years and years and years. And we're now going to, or you're going to be building something very distinctly massive in terms of what's going to be in a very limited area. Is there anything that you do as you go through the, for instance, the underground parking is the part that kind of gets to me, because I'm not familiar with other plans that I've seen so far in my time on the commission. With underground parking in such a location, I'm sensitive to the concern about how do you know if and how you're going to construct on the subterranean part of the development? Just, and my thought is, okay, do we really know what's down there? Or can we know enough before you start to build your sub-basement?
Sure, and I appreciate that question. So, we were concerned about it too, because on the Elevate project, we drove over 100 pile, I mean, actually over 400 piles with the high water tables. So, we've done a lot of geotechnical testing throughout the site to determine what the soils are, where the water table's at. We've also installed pizometers and we've-
Explain what those are?
I'll do the best I can. I'm also not a scientist.
I won't understand if it's too difficult.
Yep, they've been in there, I think, for about a year. We've monitored through, through the cycle here, fall, winter, summer and spring, but those get installed in the ground and they give us groundwater readings throughout the seasons.
I think I saw some of that in your material that you-
Yep, so we know if the groundwater's fluctuating, we get a pretty good read on average height. And from the average elevation of the groundwater, then we can set our base floor, our bottom. So, so that's what we've done. And also, you know, we rely on our geotechnical engineers as well. And on this site, they're not recommending piling. The soils are actually much better than over at Southwest Station. So, for us, it's always one of the biggest unknowns of any project is what happens when you start digging and we've spent a lot of time doing research to determine what's underneath.
Good to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Nusantara?
I have several questions.
Sure.
One is, with the seven-story height and its relative proximity to Flying Cloud Airport, will there be a need for a beacon at the top of the apartment complex?
I can't answer that. We haven't, I don't know. You know, I know going through the permitting process, we'll have to submit to Flying Cloud or the FAA, and I'm sure they'll determine if one's going to be needed or not.
My other question is, when you deconstruct the buildings that are existing on the site, what is your typical policy for removal and disposal of the, of those hardware and building items?
Yeah, I'd have to probably let John Fletcher with Press answer that, because they're actually doing all the demolition of the existing buildings. So, we can call him up if you want.
You want that answered now?
Yes.
Sure, John, come on up.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can maybe answer the FAA question too. I think it's a 200-foot height limit and so we will be needing one on our building and I wouldn't expect it on theirs either. As far as the deconstruction, we do asbestos testing. Actually, we've already completed, we've taken over 400 different samples throughout the building. It has to be remediated through the process. In terms of materials and fixtures, we actually worked with Better Futures Minnesota, which is a local organization that works with gentlemen that are coming out of prison to remove and deconstruct appliances, cabinetry, doors, toilets, make all kinds of fixtures throughout the building. As far as deconstructing the actual buildings themselves, we're planning on starting that, ideally in the next four weeks or so. Then we'll just go through a regular hazardous materials assessment process and then removal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ryan, just in follow-up to Commissioner Villarreal's question that he's left hanging out there, I'm going to just hang another part of it. If you want to go back to that site plan, I thought he was going to ask a slightly different question and maybe you can answer this, but right where that blue arrow is pointing to the front door, where you have that turnoff for the short-term parking or delivery, what have you, can you make a loop turn and head back out north to Prairie Center Drive through that green or gray median that Commissioner Villarreal pointed out? Or do you have to continue to proceed in a southerly direction and then turn right and go back out to Columbine?
I can't say that we specifically talked about that. I would hope that people continue going south and take a right out. I don't think doing a U-turn around that median's probably a good idea.
Thank you. So, it's, it'll be hanging out there for staff to attend to that at the same time. Could you refresh our memory on just the general phasing of the street system as it relates to your colored site plan here, where you're darkening the colors, or Evan is, on the property per se that we're looking at? But of course, the street system's probably going to go in a lot of it with Phase 1 with the Press Homes development. Could you further reinforce that thought of mine and make me feel good about how much of the street system's going to be installed?
Sure, that's accurate. So, Presbyterian Homes is going to do basically all of the road infrastructure, other than, I think, just because it's easier with our construction and phasing and the grades, we will do, call it the portion that runs on the backside of our site, that comes in off the drive from CVS. But the rest of the road infrastructure will be done as part of the Press Homes construction.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Maybe we can just leave that slide up there as we continue our discussions, in case we have questions about that. Thanks very much. Julie, would you like to take us through the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. As the applicant did a very thorough job of overviewing the project, I'll speak to more of the pieces that are more related to the staff review. So, as a part of the project, the applicant did mention that there will be coordinated site amenities throughout the project area, such as the streetscaping, the sidewalk, or excuse me, crosswalk materials, benches, light ballards, all of those elements in order to provide a coordinated and cohesive development among the three phases. Some of the specifics to this property as part of the PUD process, they are requesting some waivers. A couple of those waivers include density and height, which are no surprise to the commission after the concept review back in April. In addition, even though they have added a significant amount of parking since the concept review, they do still fall a little bit short of the code requirement at 1.72, I believe, is the parking that they landed on rather than the two per unit. So, they are seeking a waiver to the overall parking requirements as well as the landscaping requirements. As you saw through some of the slides presented by the applicant, there is a very robust landscaping plan and the landscaping materials that are provided on-site do include, staff is recommending that they revise their calculations to include those trees in the median coming off of that CVS driveway, and there are some other areas that they can count some additional caliper inches as well. So, that's one of the items that staff is requesting be addressed prior to review by the city council, so we can get an accurate calculation on what's needed for that waiver. In addition, the group usable open space, there, as the applicant stated, amenity-rich within the building and with outdoor amenities, they are seeking a waiver to the group usable open space. As noted in the staff report and the presentation, those areas are intended to be accessible to all residents regardless of whether the tenant lives in the five-story portion or the seven-story portion of the building, and that would be documented and required through the development agreement as well. The one piece that I didn't hear talked about by the applicant, but I want to make sure and draw attention to, is that the applicant is proposing to install public art as a part of this project as well. That is one of those items that through the design guidelines process, the planning commission and city council identified that as a consideration when a developer is seeking waivers as something that can be contributed toward the overall project. So, that is an item that would be addressed in the development agreement with regard to the process for art selection, the timing for installation, the value of the piece, that type of thing. It is something that has been addressed in a variety of other recent projects. So, staff has a consistent approach that will likely be implemented through the development agreement to address that public art that would be incorporated into the project. There are several staff recommendations that would need to be addressed prior to review by the city council. Staff has done a thorough review of the application and those are noted in the staff report. Staff doesn't have any concerns about those, but they are items that do need to be addressed similar to what I talked about with the landscaping in order to make sure that we've got the accurate calculations in place for approvals as the project were to move forward to city council. So, staff is recommending approval of the proposal with the conditions that are included in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I think you've got a few.
Thank you very much, Julie. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Rod, you want to take a swing at the questions? We had started with Commissioner Villarreal regarding the intersection at Prairie Center Drive and this incoming street to the south. I don't know if it has a name or not, but there was a three-quarter turning movement, I believe, proposed, and there was discussion at our last meeting about the incremental review of that performance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there, as was mentioned, Presbyterian Homes is building that, if you want to call that, we've been calling it the Spine Road, I guess. It's kind of the main road in that three-phase or three-outlets. They're building that entire roadway. The current access, as it will be built initially, will be a full intersection, full turning movements on all legs of the intersection. The three-quarter will only be in the future as conditions would warrant it. If it becomes an accident issue, a difficulty in getting on to Prairie Center Drive, so it'll be determined at a later date. So, that plan is part of the developer agreement, development agreement for Phase 1. It'll be part of Phase 2 and part of Phase 3, that they all contribute to that, those improvements when they are needed. But there's no, there's no definite date of when they will be needed.
Thank you. How about my add-on question about that unnamed street as one pulls out of the drop-off area for the apartment building? Would you encourage the use of that car traffic to be solely southbound? car traffic to be solely southbound, or would you allow a U-turn through the median to go back up north to Prairie Center Drive?
What's shown in the graphic there, that's dark gray, that's all southbound traffic.
Correct.
So, no, there would be, are you talking about the large median that goes all the way down to that intersection with the pavement?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Yeah, we wouldn't encourage that, but it could be done. It's going to be the busiest intersection in that development, is that internal intersection there, because all three developments will be taking access off that intersection. So there's other alternatives for vehicle to get out of that site, three or four, to be example, or three. With the CVS one, there's actually four.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Mehdi?
Julie, could you remind me what the inclusionary housing policy or requirements are? I don't know why I can't remember this, but I thought it was 10% of the unit, or there was, you know, there was a couple of different options, but can you remind me what that is?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, at this point, the city doesn't have a formal calculation for inclusionary housing policy. That's something that the Housing Task Force that's currently in operation is working towards. So on a variety of other projects, there have been different calculations that have been achieved for inclusionary housing in the Prairie Bluff Senior Living and the Southview Senior Living projects, and, forgive me, I'm having a brain cramp, Smith Village project as well had some inclusionary housing, but that has been worked on on a project-by-project basis prior to the Housing Task Force completing its work and bringing forward a recommendation to the city council.
Well, when the task force comes up with that, is that going to go through the planning commission at all, or what's that process entail?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, certainly the planning commission can be kept informed of that information as it moves forward. I don't know that the exact details have been worked out yet because it's several months down the road.
Okay, thank you. Then, my other question is, on Columbine Road, if we're talking about the main, the road, you know, between CVS and the wetland that has those trees, if that's the main sidewalk, I imagine everyone who's going to go walk on the trail, is they're going to walk there, cross Columbine, and get on the trail at that point, you know, across from where that other, I don't know if that's Lifetime's back parking lot or what that is. Is there a crosswalk there? I don't think there's a crosswalk there now, but are there any plans, or does the city want or for any reason not want a crosswalk there? Because right now, from what I can tell, the only way to cross that road on a crosswalk is to go up to Prairie Center Drive. And I know cars kind of whip around that corner.
Yeah, we would probably discourage a crossing right at the CVS entrance. If there would be any crossings, marked crossings, I mean, they're all crossings, if you will, but to mark one, it would probably be either at Castle Moore or at the center, which is another unnamed east-west street there, that's shown on the south side of Paravell here, where there'd be better sightlines.
Okay, thanks. I just, you know, I don't have anything specific I think we should do on that, but I do think, especially once it's built, you're going to find out, even wherever the crosswalk is, people are going to start, you know, going whatever's most convenient. So I just, I wonder if that is going to be a safety issue down the road or not, but it's hard to control that. You know, people are going to want to take the easiest path regardless.
It is very hard, just to follow up. I see it all the time. People heading north on Columbine and coming down and around as you try to go the other way and get into CVS or whatever. It is hard to turn left and start up the hill because the visibility is really lacking right there. I think it is a big question that should be looked at.
Commissioner Villarreal?
So, Julie, I apologize, I might have been spacing when you made this, when you addressed this, but I'm wondering, was there a response to Commissioner Mehdi's recollection of how to spread across affordable housing? Does it have to be a proportion across the entirety of the housing unit, or can it be a portioned the way that it's been proposed?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, with regard to the dispersion of the affordable units, because it is one building, technically, it does meet the requirement because all of the affordable units are provided within the building that is part of the proposed TIF district.
Rod and Julie, I have an odd question, but I want to make sure that I articulate it properly. This is a good plan to start off on this site plan number 12, if everybody can see the screen there still. At the very top of this graphic, the extreme top center of the graphic, the property line actually makes an acute angle within the existing driveway leaving CVS. You see that, where there's a little bit of an encroachment of the CVS driveway on this property? And I don't know if it's possible, if someone could click out to a larger-scale site plan that maybe shows a more regional view, including the CVS store? Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That could work for us. Thanks, Julie. Okay, so on this wider view, the CVS property itself has two driveways, a northerly one, which I suspect 98% of the traffic uses, and a southerly entrance, which is the one that I was just talking about that abuts this apartment project. And it appears as though the southerly driveway, which probably doesn't get any if much traffic at all, is two lanes, one lane in each direction. So the northerly driveway that gets all of its uses in and out, and that's where all the customers park, and I would suspect that the driveline, of course, is on the west side of the building, and that has a counterclockwise flow to it. People leave the exit driveline, and they probably circulate to the left and go out that northerly driveway as well. I'm getting to the opinion as though that southerly two-lane driveway is an overkill and an unused way. And I'm wondering if we could repurpose that land, albeit not part of this property, but there is an encroachment right now, and I wondered, would it benefit the neighborhood as a whole, specifically this development, if we could, as a minimum, turn that into one lane, or better yet, get rid of it altogether? But I'm thinking one lane on an outbound would provide some relief in case there was a dead-end parking lot condition there, and turn that over to green space as a better boulevard between the building, the seven-story portion of the building, which is so closely abutting that northerly property line, to offer greater green space and a sense of openness, as opposed to wasting an unused pavement. So again, I understand that driveway is not necessarily part of this project review. I had a, I have a sense that maybe that driveway was installed at one time because it had maybe a greater purpose for the future, and now it does not. And I think this is our one swing at the bat to maybe correct that and find out if there's a way to talk to that neighbor and repurpose some of that asphalt to green space. Does that in any way have legs?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would agree that that drive, southerly driveway, was likely there to support the 2008 Presbyterian Homes project and future phases that were contemplated as a part of that. Certainly from a city perspective, there's not necessarily been any conversation with CVS about inviting them, if you will, into this project. I can't speak for the developer if they've had any conversations with CVS ownership as a part of that or not.
Okay. Well, I'd like to maybe just advance that by getting other feedback from commissioners and possibly the applicant in due time. But I think that could be a betterment. One other question I had for staff before we opened up the public hearing. I've heard a lot about the metric of parking based on a bedroom as opposed to a unit, and in our business, that seems to make a little more sense. The metric that's thrown out is typically one stall per bedroom, which I think is a good target. Do you agree with that, and do you have any comments on us weighing the pros and cons of their parking numbers based on that metric?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the parking requirements for the RM25 zoning district, which is what this property is owned, were established quite some time ago. The most recent look that staff has taken at parking requirements has been with regard to the town center and the TOD districts, and in those cases, parking is a little bit more flexible in that it takes into account bedrooms rather than just units, because, as you know, units can be a wide variety of things, but a bedroom count is kind of tried and true, if you will. So, from that perspective, as the applicant mentioned, this project does provide one parking stall per bedroom. It does meet that. I don't know the number right off the top of my head, but it does meet that requirement or metric.
Right. Thank you for your opinion, appreciate it. Commissioners, any more questions of staff before we move on to the public hearing? Hearing none. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I would invite anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the commission, to present themselves up at the podium at this time. Seeing none. We won't have anybody from the public speak. I would entertain a motion from the commission to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Higgins, second by Commissioner Villarreal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Okay, commissioners, thoughts, comments, otherwise?
I would just like to get a clarification, if I could, from staff about the TIF period that will pertain or that will be discussed. I'm not quite clear on where that goes from here.
Chair and commissioners, the maximum TIF period for a housing district is 26 years, and the city expectation is that the affordability would remain during that period, even if the TIF is paid off earlier. That is subject to our current negotiations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Villarreal?
All right, I'll ask you a question of the applicant. On the north portion of the proposal of Phase 2, where Commissioner Farr was talking, what is the distance between the edge of the construction to the sidewalk or the road?
Again, we have a point intrusion there. As noted, it kind of comes to an angle, and it's not very consistent. I think at its minimum point, it's something like 12 feet, but for the majority of the building, we're back at that 20 to 22 feet.
And then, have you inquired about accessing more of the roadway that it runs up against?
I have not personally, and would have to defer to Timberland.
Okay.
I had a question, and a follow-up question to Commissioner Villarreal. The legend says a scale of 1 inch to 80 feet, so when you look at that encroachment and that angle and do a little math, it would appear to be less than 12 feet.
That could just be a copy and paste from the PowerPoint from the physical copy, I would imagine, but it is in the narrative that we supported, and there's called out dimensions showing that.
So a guaranteed 12 feet of clearance there?
Do you recall that, Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, on the scalable drawings, it is a distance of 12 feet at that point intrusion that Mr. Jacobson is referring to. So, on average, they do reach out into that 20, 22-foot range, but at the point intrusion, it is right around 12 to 13 feet.
So I'd like to just dig a little deeper and find out about the desirability or feasibility of you approaching the owner of the CVS property and see if that idea makes any sense to you to increase the green space. I don't know who would want to take that question.
Yeah, we have not reached out to CVS, so we'd have to track down the ownership and have a conversation with them. So, we can explore it. It's a hard question to answer because we have no right to impose anything on them, so all we can do is ask.
Okay. You have a little bit of a leg to stand on with their encroachment into your property. I was hoping that could just open the door with a little wedge.
We'll see. It is a big company.
It is. Okay.
Acting as their lawyer now, Ed? Sounds like one.
I just play one on TV. No, I don't. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Well, go ahead.
No, I was going to opine at this point in time.
Please, now's the time.
Okay. So overall, I'm largely in support of this plan. I think my one concern relates to the putting all of the affordable housing into the five-story, predominantly because of the limited number of two-bedroom apartments in that side of the building. If I did my math after multiple attempts, got it right, that it's 13% of the bedrooms in the five-story are two-bedroom. And I think that is a limiting factor for perhaps families or other types of, other residents who we want, who may be in our community, and rather than focusing on perhaps the empty nesters or the couples. I don't know how to do this, but I think that some amount of greater proportion of the two-bedroom facilities should be opened up, rather than just relying almost entirely on studios and one-bedrooms. But that's just my only pause I have on this, otherwise, pretty good proposal.
So, Commissioner Villarreal, I'm just reading while you're opining on page seven of the staff report. Staff talks about the percentage of, or the numbers of two-bedroom units that will be, as a minimum, designated as affordable or inclusionary, and of the seven units, at 80% AMI, a minimum of one two-bedroom unit at the bottom of page seven. And then at the top of page eight, of the six units at 100% AMI, four are two-bedroom units, and if I'm reading the mix of affordable TIF units, there's a total of 10 two-bedroom units at 50% AMI.
Right. Right, and I guess what I'm more responding to is the proposal by the applicant to have all of that housing be located in the five-story side of the building, and staff report on page two says there's going to be a total of 17 two-bedroom apartments in the five-story. And so, I guess you look at the other way, the majority of those 17 units are available for low income, but we're just pushing all of them into the five-story.
Sure. Could the applicant come up and tell us if there's going to be an us-and-them difference between the five-story and seven-story as it relates to marketing the project?
Absolutely not. I mean, one of the things we want to do here is have a variety of housing types. So the finishes, I'd like to get away from calling this the five-story and even the seven-story building. It's one building. We're marketing the building to the population, not this population or that population. So, it's not only important to our marketing, but it's important to the residents that when they live in the building, that you're not identified by what unit you live on. So, the units themselves will be the same, you know, finish packages, so there's not a discrepancy in unit finishes or how we're going to market to the overall building. It's one building, everyone's got access to all the amenities.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. Let me restate it a different way. So while there is a minimum number of two-bedroom units that are to be covered, that total 15-ish, and again, without knowing how to do this economically, because I tend to agree with the economics that the smaller units, you can't just start pushing people into larger units because that, that will ruin the economics of it. I just don't know how to make more of the two-bedroom units potentially available because I think that there is a potential, or perhaps, I don't know if there is, but I would like to think there's a market in our community for families who would like to have a two-bedroom unit and perhaps like some of the amenities that they could avail themselves of in this building.
Can I comment on that, Commissioner Villarreal? You know, I agree with what you're saying, and here's my thought on this, because I don't think it's fair to, it would be onerous to have, you know, one specific apartment building, you know, have, you know, a bunch more two-bedroom units available because we need more two-bedroom. I think it's fair to say your affordable units are in proportion to your overall unit mix. So I just did the quick math. It looks like about 24 percent of the affordable units are two-bedrooms, if I did that math right. If their overall unit mix is about 24 percent two-bedrooms, then it's an even amount. But having, making them weigh more into the two-bedrooms is maybe unfair, but I think it's fair to ask that it's proportional. So I don't know their mix of the two-bedrooms. I couldn't find that offhand, but that's just in response to that. I think, you know, that's how we should approach the unit mix of affordable units in developments. And maybe the Housing Task Force talks about this, which actually I'd, I'd encourage them to address, you know, if there is a requirement for 10 percent of the units, having the, the unit mix of those units proportionate to the unit mix of the overall development in some way. Although at the same time, you know, I do, I do appreciate that. I think the need is, is with, you know, units that can house families. So I don't, it's obviously something that can be discussed further, but those are just my thoughts in response to that.
Thank you.
And I think that's, that's a fair statement as well, and I would concur with that. A proportional percentage would be perhaps a better way to go. I'm just looking in my, you know, simpleton language, I'm just looking at large numbers and small numbers and not liking to do the math.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner DeSantis.
One question I have is, one of the sustainability components will be green roofing trays over portions of the concrete podium. I'm wondering, would there be a provision or an opportunity for rooftop garden or some type of materials that would encourage people to have a community garden on the roof of the building?
So the, the green roof trays are explicitly on the courtyard side because that's where our concrete podium ends. So I think that, you know, we have in previous projects done community garden-esque raised, raised planter beds on rooftops, and I think that that's certainly an option that we could explore. The way that our rooftop patios are set up right now is the only outdoor spaces associated with the rooftop decks are the actual patio environment, so it would be a, a matter of decreasing the amount of patio and increasing the amount of residual area left for planting materials, if that makes sense.
There might also be an issue with occupant loads on a roof without proper exiting upstairs and elevators for accessibility, potentially. I'd like to just summarize my opinions. I think this is a fantastic project. You gentlemen have done a wonderful job of presenting this and staying with us through the process of review. Mr. Jacobson, I think your design is outstanding. Appreciate your, your refinements along the way, and it'll be a strong project on our skyline of Eden Prairie. Your, your one slide that you had about the different stone materials with the white cast stone at the corners, I think is a very strong element. There was one photograph down on the left-hand side of that slide that had a pattern much like concrete block, and I'd be careful just to make sure that the scale and pattern of that doesn't end up looking like concrete block. The monumentality of it, you spoke to, made sense to me, and so I trust you with those proportions. But appreciate the, the variety of architectural interest and the additional roof lines and the nice materials. I'm okay with the group usable open space reduction, given the intensity that you're using, the indoor and outdoor spaces as. I thought there's a wide variety of useful, interesting, and very inviting amenities for your, for your residents. Landscaping waivers and setback waivers, I think, are appropriate, given the density targets that we're setting for this property, and I'm in support of that as well. I think the parking is more than adequate, and I think you're going to have a really successful development on your hands. So congratulations, I'm looking forward to it. Commissioner Mehdi.
I'll just summarize my thoughts, too. I agree with you on that, the, the white stone or whatever it is, to avoid making it just look like concrete block. I've seen buildings, for the life of me, I can't think of a good example, but sometimes it is poorly executed, and it does, it just doesn't look bad. I'm, you know, if you're familiar with City Place and Woodbury, I think that product that I can't think of the name that they used is, is something maybe to look into, a wider version of that. They use like a beige, but I think that's something to make that look like a stone would be important because that's going to be your feature corners. I'm happy with the parking. I was a little bit concerned before with the 1.3. I thought that was a little tight, given that this is still, you know, suburban, it's not right on transit and all of that. So I think the 1.7 will be plenty, and overall, I really like the design, and I think there's a lot of amenity space. I know we're looking at waivers for landscaping, but I think that's made up for in both indoor and outdoor. I think, you know, I think we need to give some credit to, you know, indoor and rooftop, which doesn't really give credit in landscaping, but there's that trade-off. If we want density, we can't fit as much landscaping. So I'm supportive of, of all of that.
Thank you.
I'll just make one sort of forward-looking from this. I'm already looking forward to people moving in, and when they have children that go to school. This is a ways away, but just to keep it, and I'm sure you've had the experience, that's the point, I haven't. The, the school buses and the pickup for the kids and when they come home from, from school, that's probably important to work. I don't know if the best way is with the school district initially, once the building is ready for people to come and try to, you know, see if they want to live, live there. But I know there are going to be children, and even when they're not there, when they first move in, they're going to be there soon enough. So I just know that I have had that experience as a parent years ago, and now with my own kids with kids. It's sort of on my head all the time about how they come home and what they do. But otherwise, I'm really amazed at how much you've been able to do in this particular setting. I wasn't sure at all, given the way the property has been all this time, what, what the city is used to, what you might be able to arrange, but I'm very impressed with what you've come up with. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner DeSantis?
I echo Commissioner Higgins' perspective. This is truly a 21st century project. I'm deeply impressed with the amount of thought you put into the architecture, the surrounding landscape. Yeah, there are waivers, there are details, but in the main, this is a project I'm really excited about, and will be a substantial contribution to the aesthetics and skyline of the commercial district.
Thank you very much. Might we be ready for a motion?
I'll move to recommend approval of the planned unit development concept review on 4.962 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 4.962 acres, site plan review on 4.962 acres, and preliminary plat of an outlot into one lot on 4.962 acres based on plans stamped dated August 16th, 2019, and the staff report dated August 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. We've had a motion by Commissioner Villarreal. Have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Commissioner DeSantis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Anybody abstain? None? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Appreciate all your efforts and good luck on the project. Okay. Next on our agenda, there's a planner's report for the modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number five and tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing district number 24. Julie, would you like to tell us more about this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the planning commission is asked to adopt a resolution finding that the modification to the redevelopment plan in the district conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. So as mentioned through the presentation by the developer, TIF is being requested as a part of the Paraval project. As a part of that, the city is also looking to grow the area covered by its project area for TIF to include the entire city. So as a part of that, the planning commission is asked to pass this resolution finding that the project is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. You're not being asked to weigh in on the specifics of the financial package or the numbers that back up the TIF or anything of that sort. That's something that the, excuse me, the city council will get into as a part of the TIF district review, but rather, this resolution just would find that the project is in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
For clarification, does it matter if we're in conformance with the current comprehensive guide plan, 2030, or are you forecasting up to the 2040?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in either case, it would be in conformance.
Thank you. And did I hear that this district includes the entire city of Eden Prairie?
Forward.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'll defer that question to Ms. Jeremiah. She can speak to it with more detail than I can.
Thank you.
Chair and commissioners, Janet Jeremiah, Community Development Director, I forgot to tell you my name and title last time. The district is actually only the property, and that would be the area from which we would collect the increment. The project area is coterminous with the city boundaries, and the purpose of that is that is where we could spend pooled TIF, and it would allow us to be more nimble as projects come before us without having to take further action. Sometimes there's also other funding, such as county sources, that we support applicants, and they also need to be found to be within a redevelopment area, so it would cover that situation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask a question then? So that would mean that if a program, if a plan was being presented for development in another area that's not now part of this area, that it would automatically be eligible for that discussion and decision on financing?
Chair and Commissioner Higgins, that's correct. We couldn't collect tax increment from other areas without establishing an actual district, but the project area allows us to spend resources that we pooled or to support other projects that need to be within a redevelopment area to meet those requirements. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is it, is it typical? I, I just, I'm not sure if I've seen this before where it's the whole, the project area is the whole city. Is that, you know, there are other cities that have done this, or, you know, what's the sort of, I don't know if there's a story behind why, why we're doing this?
Yes, it's actually very common for the redevelopment area to be coterminous with the city boundaries. St. Louis Park and many other cities within the metro do it this way. That's a question I asked of our elders finance as well, and they said it is indeed very common.
Okay. And Janet or Julie, which one of you can answer the question? If this applicant is requesting this TIF opportunity, I don't recall on our review and approval of the Presbyterian Homes Project a few months ago that they had asked for it. And verify that for me, and then could you forecast out to the commercial development, the third leg of this stool that's going to come through for approvals? Will they be asking for it?
Presbyterian Homes did not request TIF. They are doing some affordability through our kind of inclusionary housing requirements or policies at this point, and we do not expect that the commercial development will request TIF either.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Villarreal?
So Julie, thank you for that clarification, because let me tell you, I had some words to say about bonds. Levity, levity.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Commissioners, would anybody like to make a motion if there are no further questions?
I'll make the motion. Move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2019-01, finding that a modification to the redevelopment plan for project area number five and tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing district number five?
24.
24. Excuse me. Financing district number 24 conforms to the general plans for the development and redevelopment of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Villarreal. Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
Second by Commissioner DeSantis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you very much. I don't see any members' reports on the agenda, so I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.